We reconvene the Parker Town Council at 6:59 PM. All council members are present. Tonight, we have our continuing virtual pledge of allegiance by our Boy Scout. Tonight is Mr. Preston Hartzuk. So, Danette, if you will advance Preston so he can lead us in the pledge. Preston, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. So, the floor is yours if you tell us to stand and lead us in the pledge.
Could everybody please stand? For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzuk. We appreciate that. All right, moving on in our agenda. Michelle, do we have any special presentations tonight?
No, we do not.
Great, thank you. So, with that, we will move on to the Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. And I believe I saw Cara Masa on there.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Hope you are enjoying your night. We have a couple of exciting things coming up for us this week. We will have our 2021 Parker Magazine Directory available. So, really excited about the new format coming out this week. Also, this Thursday, we are actually having a multi-chamber Business After Hour and Speed Networking event. This will be six different chambers in the South Metro side of Denver. We're all getting together virtually to network, have some breakout rooms, and hopefully make a lot of connections. So, super excited about that. Please let me know if you're interested in something in that area. Another thing we have going on next week, we're going to do a virtual business leads group. To get to know what a leads group does, we're going to actually have one of ours do the whole thing virtually so people can all join in and just see how that works. So, kind of some exciting events coming up again, looking forward to this multi-chamber event on Thursday. Again, enjoying our new office. And that's about it for the chamber. Any questions?
Great. Any questions of Cara? Nope. Thank you. And thanks, Cara, for thinking outside the box and getting all those multi-chamber things going and as well as the Business After Hours. Excellent. Excellent to hear we're coming out of that.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. All right, we'll move on to the Downtown Business Alliance. And I see a very familiar, I wasn't going to say old familiar face, I was going to say a very familiar face. I think we have Shelley Mango on to do our DBA update. The Returning Board member, Shelley Mango.
Who's on mute.
And I think you're on mute.
Oh, can you see me? Oh, there we are.
Yep, we can hear you. Yep.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Shelley.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and town staff for having the Downtown Business Alliance again at tonight's meeting. The DBA had our first meeting of 2021, and we're delighted to have Chief Sarapis and Deputy Chief Combs presenting. They gave an insightful presentation on the state of affairs and policing around the downtown Parker area. We once again wanted to thank them for presenting to our members and making us feel safe and protected. Our next membership meeting will be on February 10th. We'd like to invite our new Town Council members, Council members Hendricks and Hefta, to attend and get to know our members. We're looking for a five-minute or so about you, followed by a question and answer, Q and A. If you can't attend this month's meeting, you're welcome to attend our next meeting. Meetings start second Wednesday of every month at 9:10 AM with Zoom and in-person attendance options. If anyone's interested that's watching this and would like to find out more about our meetings, please email admin@downtownparker.com if you're interested. We'd like to congratulate and welcome Mr. Beau Martinez in his role of Deputy Town Administrator. We look forward to working with him to continually improve the business environment in downtown Parker. Both he and Michelle Cavella will attend our March membership meeting, and we are very looking forward to having them come and mix and mingle and get to know all the business members. Our board and committee chairs are currently in the process of solidifying plans for 2021. We're striving to accomplish three overall goals this year. The first goal is continue to advance our marketing efforts promoting both downtown Parker and small businesses as a destination of choice. We're working on videos and a website refresh to downtownparker.com, so keep your eyes out for that. Our second goal is to deliver enhancements to downtown Parker in the form of entertainment decks and planters, and we're currently working with town staff to find an acceptable design. And we're expecting this to happen sometime in mid-May. Our third goal is to strive to bring back fall events. Fingers crossed if able to do so safely. And speaking of marketing, I don't know if anyone's driven going east to west down Main Street, but you may have noticed a new sign. It's behind me, it's in my background, and it's promoting downtown Parker, our website, and trying to encourage all of our residents to really take pride in downtown Parker and be a part of everything we're doing. Lastly, thank you, Town Council and staff, for your generous grant this year. We understand it's particularly a tough time, and we're very grateful for the funding. It's essential to our efforts as we strive to continually improve our downtown area. So, does anyone have any questions about our update?
Great. Any questions? Okay. No, ma'am, thank you very much. Great report.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda are public comments. As a reminder, public comments for items that are not on the agenda will be addressed in a manner provided by the Town Administrator's Emergency Order Number 8-2020, and those are emailed to the town clerk prior to 5:00 on council meeting days. We have one public comment that we received today, and that will be included in the minutes for the February 1st, 2020 meeting. With that, we will move to reports and items and comments from the mayor and council. Mr. Hendricks, we'll start with you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuing orientation upon your role as council member. Also, it's February, so our board liaison assignment has been given to us. I'm excited to get involved with that, of which include Centennial Airport Community Round, Community Noise Roundtable, the Douglas County Youth Initiative, Parker Senior Center, and the Partnership of Douglas County Governments. Thank you.
You're going to be a busy guy. Councilmember Pogue.
Okay, got a couple things for you. So, we've been discussing the Greater Parker Foundation, and it should be up later tonight with donations. But we're going to be looking at the incorporation documents of that and bring it back to council at a future time because frankly, I personally have a concern of us exceeding arm's length. And what do we need to do to do that? So, we'll be meeting on that hopefully February 10th. And then the Douglas County Housing Partnership. Parker is a member of that. Council Pines has joined recently completely and fully a member now as of the end of 2020. But I don't think many people know what this entity does, so I thought I'd just take a minute to kind of share what that is. And so, it provides educational programs, sometimes some financial assistance, but they're looking at homeownership programs, homebuyer education classes, budget and credit counseling improvement, foreclosure mitigation and counseling, reverse mortgage counseling, and rental housing. So, with their rental housing units, from most of what they have right now, they are building one in Parker, but most of them are in other areas of Douglas County, but they provide units at 5% to 60% of AMI. That's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Diak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here, the last week or so, I've had the great pleasure of speaking to our county commissioners. We had an IGA approved over at the county regarding the High Plains Trail. That, as we know it, is the United Nations of Trails. Parker and Dennis Trapp has been spearheading this for over 20 years, so hopefully we can get that under construction, I think, by year end if I'm not mistaken. So, yep, the answer is yes. I had the opportunity to sit on a conference call Saturday morning regarding Dial 2.0 for the State Health Department. It looks like they're going to be making improvements, and it'll be good for businesses. More to come probably Wednesday or Thursday. And then, Dr. Cogwise, we have a safer Main Streets program. That's a $77 million program to fund challenged areas. The initial list was $56 million. Dr. Cog advocated to put out more money on the streets. So, again, working with our town and county staff to see if we can move the needle on a few of our local projects. And, Mr. Mayor, I will take the under at 55 minutes as well. Thank you.
It's on the record, my friend, on the record. Councilmember Hefta.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in the last couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to conduct some outreach with Southeast Christian Church, and we'll be conducting more outreach with them this week. In addition, Councilmember Pogue and myself conducted outreach with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I'd just like to mention that the outreach we conduct is with these partners in our community that contribute greatly to our community through Parker Task Force, C-Cor Cares, the Greater Parker Foundation, and other areas of contribution for the community, some of the outreach that we're doing. In addition, as Councilmember Hendricks mentioned, we've also been assigned our liaison committees, and I will be, I'm learning right now from staff about the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority, and I'm also learning about the Greater Parker Foundation, and I'll continue learning on these as well as as time goes by. And those are just a few to mention on the liaisons. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. And for me, I've attended the Metro Mayor's Caucus. We had our retreat here last week or week before. It was great. You get to be with all the mayors from around and hear what's going on in their community. It was a fantastic event. Also, Parker Chamber Commerce Board last week, and then we are planning for our council retreat, which is going to be held February 26th. And like, I believe, Shelley Mango, we are looking forward to Mr. Martinez, our new Deputy Town Administrator, focusing on economic development, being there and walking through that with us because that, obviously, we're all in agreement, that is a big focus for our 2021. So, thank you all very much, as I'm sure the viewing public can see, you have a very, very busy council. So, thank you all for that extra time. Moving on to item number seven, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There is no separate discussion of consent items unless council votes to remove an item for an individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introductory only and will not be removed for discussion. Consent Agenda items discussed at study sessions can also be viewed by clicking the link online in the agenda. So, council, ahead of you, you have items 7A through E.
I move to approve Consent Agenda items 7A through 7E.
I second. Second. It's been moved by John, seconded by Todd. You should have a vote pop up on your screen. Consent calendar passes unanimously, four to zero. Item number eight, ordinances. Ordinance number 9.326 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder and the Town of Parker regarding the April 20th, 2021 special election. Mr. Maloney, I believe you're handling this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet this evening, as the mayor indicated, is an ordinance to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Douglas County, and this is to assist the town in conducting the special election that will be held on April 20 of this year for the purpose of filling two vacancies that currently exist on Town Council. Typically, the county takes a much larger role in handling elections, and that's because we coordinate with them in November because this is not a November election. We're not coordinating under the Uniform Election Code. Rather, we are conducting election under the Municipal Election Code, which is a bit different, and the town itself is going to have to carry a much larger burden than we do traditionally in conducting the election. In any case, the IGA identifies those duties that will be assumed by the county in assisting us. Largely, what they're going to do is to provide their election machines for purposes of counting ballots, as well as assisting in the storage of ballots and collecting ballots as they're dropped off at the four ballot boxes within the town itself. My understanding is that the county is agreeable to the terms and conditions that are enclosed. I think the commissioners are going to be addressing this in the next couple of weeks. And in any case, in order to meet our election calendar, we need Town Council to consider and hopefully approve the ordinance this evening. Any questions, Mayor and Council?
Council questions, Laura? John?
No.
Oh, sorry. Todd? Cheryl?
No.
Okay, no questions. Danette, do we have anyone on? Obviously, this is not a public hearing, but if there's anyone on that wants to speak to this, they can raise their hand in the Zoom chat.
Yes, and there's nobody who has raised their hand.
Okay.
And just for the record, if you could just open it up for public comment, and then we can close it.
Okay.
Indicating time.
Okay.
Yeah, would you like to wait a minute to see if anybody has a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Just tell me when you, so if you could open it up for public comment. So, we'll open this up for public comment at 7:15.
And for those of you on Zoom, star six to raise your hand. There are no public comments.
Then we'll close public comment at 7:15, and we'll entertain any more questions of anyone. Seeing no other questions, we'll entertain a vote.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 9.326 on second reading.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. You should have a vote pop up on your screen. Consent calendar passes unanimously, four to zero. Item number eight, ordinances. Ordinance number 9.326 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder and the Town of Parker regarding the April 20th, 2021 special election. Mr. Maloney, I believe you're handling this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet this evening, as the mayor indicated, is an ordinance to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Douglas County, and this is to assist the town in conducting the special election that will be held on April 20 of this year for the purpose of filling two vacancies that currently exist on Town Council. Typically, the county takes a much larger role in handling elections, and that's because we coordinate with them in November because this is not a November election. We're not coordinating under the Uniform Election Code. Rather, we are conducting election under the Municipal Election Code, which is a bit different, and the town itself is going to have to carry a much larger burden than we do traditionally in conducting the election. In any case, the IGA identifies those duties that will be assumed by the county in assisting us. Largely, what they're going to do is to provide their election machines for purposes of counting ballots, as well as assisting in the storage of ballots and collecting ballots as they're dropped off at the four ballot boxes within the town itself. My understanding is that the county is agreeable to the terms and conditions that are enclosed. I think the commissioners are going to be addressing this in the next couple of weeks. And in any case, in order to meet our election calendar, we need Town Council to consider and hopefully approve the ordinance this evening. Any questions, Mayor and Council?
Council questions, Laura? John?
No.
Oh, sorry. Todd? Cheryl?
No.
Okay, no questions. Danette, do we have anyone on? Obviously, this is not a public hearing, but if there's anyone on that wants to speak to this, they can raise their hand in the Zoom chat.
Yes, and there's nobody who has raised their hand.
Okay.
And just for the record, if you could just open it up for public comment, and then we can close it.
Okay.
Indicating time.
Okay.
Yeah, would you like to wait a minute to see if anybody has a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Just tell me when you, so if you could open it up for public comment. So, we'll open this up for public comment at 7:15.
And for those of you on Zoom, star six to raise your hand. There are no public comments.
Then we'll close public comment at 7:15, and we'll entertain any more questions of anyone. Seeing no other questions, we'll entertain a vote.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 9.326 on second reading.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. You should have a vote pop up on your screen. And the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number nine in our resolutions, we have three for tonight. 9A, Resolution Number 21-009, a resolution to accept donations from the Greater Parker Foundation. And I believe we have Rhonda with us.
Yes, you do. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, if you'll introduce yourself.
My name is Rhonda Willie, and I'm the Controller for the Town of Parker.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Donations raised through the Greater Parker Foundation are transferred to the town as they are received and used by the town for specific purposes of the donation. This resolution formalizes the town's acceptance of the donations which were given in the year of 2020, according to Section 15.7 of the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter. It formalizes contributions that are given to the town, and they were all for cultural purposes, and the dollar amount was $21,160. With that, if you have any questions, I can try to answer.
Excellent. Any questions? Todd? Cheryl? Any questions? John?
Rhonda, it says Controller here. That's a new title for you, right? Or am I just oblivious to?
It's been about a year, but...
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, I apologize.
Right on it.
Usually, it's like Mary Lou, I think, on this. I just haven't connected the Controller. Well, thank you, and congratulations, very, very blatedly.
Laura, any comments, questions?
Just a question. Is this the amount of donations we've received for 2020 on par with what we've received in recent years, or is this about average?
It was a little higher last year. In 2019, there was a late donation of $10,000 that didn't get transferred to the town until 2020. So, that's why it's about double, and $10,000 from one contributor is quite large. Usually, it's a lot less than that. But two years in a row, the same contribution was made, so that's where the $20,000 comes from. If that wasn't there, it would have been $1,160.
Great. All right, if there's no further questions, we will open it up for public comment at 7:18. Danette? Again, if you would like to make public comment, raise your hand on Zoom or star six.
And there are no public comments.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment at 7:18. Any other questions of the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-009.
Great, thanks, Todd.
I'll second.
Yeah. It's been moved by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Your vote should be popping up. And the resolution passes unanimously. Item number 9B, Resolution Number 21-007, a resolution finding substantial compliance of the Comm Park Boulevard at Upland Drive Right-of-Way Properties Annexation Petition with CRS Section 31-12-107, and a setting a public hearing on March 15th, 2021 for the purpose of considering said annexation. We have Mary with us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll wait for Danette to get our PowerPoint pulled up.
Great.
While she's doing that, I will just say again, this is Resolution Number 21-007, a resolution finding substantial compliance of the Comm Park Boulevard at Upland Drive Right-of-Way Properties Annexation Petition with Colorado Revised Statute 31-12-107, and setting a public hearing on March 15th, 2021 for the purpose of considering said annexation.
And Mary, will you introduce yourself in your department?
Mary Monocata, Senior Planner in Community Development.
Great, thank you.
There we go. Next slide, Danette. This resolution is the first step in the process to consider the annexation of this segment of Comm Park Boulevard roadway. The sole purpose of this resolution tonight is to set a public hearing date. If Resolution 21-007 is approved tonight, it will set the public hearing date for March 15th, 2021, at which time council will then consider the Comm Park Boulevard right-of-way for annexation. The proposed annexation is for approximately 600 lineal feet of town-owned right-of-way, which has also been maintained by the town since 2018. The annexation will confirm jurisdictional responsibility for maintenance for this roadway segment, and this section of roadway is contiguous to town boundary, meeting statutory requirements for annexation. It is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan and is considered routine and cleanup to ensure that town-owned property is located within our municipal boundaries. Next slide, okay. The Comm Park Boulevard at Upland Drive roadway segment is shown in orange on the map. Again, this resolution is only for setting a public hearing date of March 15th for council to consider the annexation then. A full presentation will be provided at that public hearing, and with that, staff recommends approval of Resolution 21-007. That concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, I also have my colleague from engineering, Chris Hudson, in the audience, to help answer any questions.
Excellent. Council, we'll go down the path. Councilmember Hendricks, any questions?
No questions.
No, sir.
John? Laura?
None, thank you.
That was fast, I thought so. All right, we will open it up for any public comment at 7:22 PM.
Please press star six in Zoom if you'd like to raise your hand. There are no public comments.
Okay, we will close public comment at 7:22 PM, and if there's any more questions or comments from council, or we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-007.
Great, thank you.
I second.
Todd? All right. Motion made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Your vote should be popping up. Resolution Number 9C, Resolution Number 21-011, a resolution to extend the conditions deadline for the minor plat, I'm sorry, minor development plat and subdivision agreement for Douglas 234 filing number six through June 1st, 2021. Brianna, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Give it one second. My name is Brianna Simon, and I'm an Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. So, on November 19th of 2020, Town Council had a public hearing for a minor development plat to subdivide a 13.8-acre unbuildable lot located at the northeast corner of Chambers Road and Hess Road into 11 buildable commercial lots, a landscape tract, and an unbuildable tract for a private roadway. Town Council approved this item with the conditions shown on the screen outlining a deadline of February 14th of 2021 for these two conditions to be completed. The applicant is requesting an amendment to these conditions to extend the dates from February 14th to June 1st of 2021. The current property ownership consists of 31 individuals. Coordinating the documents required for the 31 owners to sell the property has caused delays in the closing process. Therefore, the applicant is requesting an extension to allow for the closing to take place. Next slide, please. Thank you. Please note, the requested extension does not alter the minor development plat or any future development on this site. All future developments on the buildable lots will be required to comply with the commercial uses permitted in the Douglas 234 plan development and all relevant town standards. If the dates are not amended and the property owner is unable to meet the deadline, the approval will expire, and the applicant will be required to resubmit the minor development plat and begin the plating process over again. Therefore, staff is requesting the approval of Resolution Number 21-011 to extend the condition deadline to June 1st, 2021 for Douglas 234 minor development plat and subdivision agreement.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Is this the first extension request?
That's correct.
Cheryl, any questions?
No questions.
No, sir.
Laura?
Just given that there's 31 people, I'm just thinking, is June 1st going to be enough
The coordinator for this, Jan Getty from First Guardian Group in San Jose, has been challenged to get all the documents put together, but we think by March or mid-March, we're hopefully closed, and I appreciate the council's consideration of this. If you have any questions, both Andy Tryley and I are here to answer them.
Okay. Council, any questions of the applicant?
I have one.
Cheryl?
Yeah. Mr. Nelson, in looking at this, it's an LLC. In your formation documents, do all partners have equal votes? Is that what's causing the problem here?
So the partnership that owns it currently, DBSI, Chambers and Ness, they each, under a tenant common ownership, yes, they each have individual votes, and they have to act unanimously on each decision. So it took us a couple of years to get them under contract, just because they have to move as a unit, and they are all, you know, excited to get this closed. They've owned this property a long time. A number of them didn't think they were going to be in this property for more than a couple months, and 15 years later, they're still owning this property. So I think they're all pretty motivated sellers at this point. We don't anticipate any issues, and as I said, Jan Getty and her husband, Paul Getty, have run a number of these TIC, or Tenant Common Ownership Groups, and they've been successful in getting these properties closed. This is the largest TIC I've ever worked with by a factor of 10, probably.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Any other public comments? Danette, I see Andrew is on. I don't know if he wanted to say anything.
Andrew, do you have any comments?
No, I do not. Thank you for asking.
Great, thank you. All right, Danette, are you seeing anyone else for public comment?
I see no one else, thank you.
Well, now we'll close it at 7:29 p.m. and entertain any other questions or comments from the council? None? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-011.
I'll second it.
And Cheryl. The motion was made by councilmember Hendricks, seconded by councilmember Pogue. The vote should pop up.
Yeah. Hold on, let me get out. Oh, there we are.
That adds an hour to your time for your vote.
I tried to extend it for you.
I know you are. And the resolution passes unanimously. With another business before the town council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Right.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Cheryl Pogue, seconded by councilmember Hendricks. Your vote should pop up.
Oh, wait a minute. I disconnected too quick.
Okay. Chris, can we do a roll call? Vote. Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Diak? And councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
With that, we will stand adjourned at 7:31.